Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Rancho Mirage City Council Meeting for Thursday, March 7, 2019. The council also serves as the library, an observatory board, the housing authority, and the city council representing the Development Successor Agency. At this point, I'll call the meeting to order, and we'll begin with this flag salute being led by our city manager, Isaiah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Isaiah. And Kristy, would you please do the roll call?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Councilmember Weil?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smotrich? And Mayor Kite?
Here. Thank you very much. We have several presentations today, and I'll begin with the first one, where we're going to introduce Division Chief Tyrell Davis to Rancho Mirage. The city has a long history of dedicated public servants, and we're proud to have the involvement in this community and excited to welcome yet another asset to our public safety team. Battalion Chief White and Division Chief Davis, would you please step to the podium? Good afternoon, you made it.
Yes, sir.
Good, okay. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, sir, I would. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members of staff, city manager. My name is Brian White, I'm the battalion chief for Palm Desert Ranch of Mirage and Indian Wells, and I'd like to introduce my new boss. This is Division Chief Tyrell Davis, and welcome him to the team. He's taken over the West Desert Division, and he'll be a tremendous asset to the team here. Chief?
Thank you, Chief White. Council, Mayor, and the residents of the city of Rancho Mirage, thank you, and it's an honor to be able to have been chosen to serve a wonderful city. I started my fire service career out in the valley here in 1994, so it was definitely an honor and pleasure and excitement to actually come back and be able to serve a great city. My role will be to continue the effective and efficient and professional fire service operation we have here in the city, and that is my goal, and to continue to maintain that and to build that with the team. So I appreciate the support of the fire service, and on behalf of the fire chief for Cal Fire Riverside County Fire Department, it's an honor to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Davis, and welcome to the new team for you. We look forward to working with you. Thanks again for being here today. Okay, the next presentation we're going to have is an update on the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert. This is presented by Carol Scott, who has served as the chief executive officer of the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert in Rancho Mirage since May of 2015. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you. Mayor Kite, and thank you, honorable council members, and city manager Isaiah Hagerman. It is a pleasure always to be here, and we've been a little bit busy, so I have a lot to update you on. But first of all, I have a special guest. I don't know where he is.
You hope you have a special guest. So much for the special guest.
He's a little slow walking.
Okay.
So we'll give him time. We had this all timed out, the best laid plans, right? That's not them.
Daniel, are you the special guest?
No, Daniel is not the special guest. And I don't know you, but you're not the special guest either. I don't know what happened to him, but I...
Stage fright.
He'll interrupt me. But we are here today to give you an update, but to also express our sincere thank you for all that the city has done the last year for us, which has been tremendous, and we know that. And test my technical skills here to see...oops. So, to date, which is with four months to go, our total attendance is over 50,000, which means we will probably hit the highest we have in years by the end of the year. And as always, in the last few months, we've had 47 different states and over 11 different countries represented in our visitorship at the museum. And January and February, we love the cold and the rain at the Children's Museum, because everybody else whose attendance is down benefits us, and that's a terrible thing. Did Sid show up? Sid, hi Sid.
Special guest.
This is a special guest. This is Sid the Science Kid, and Sid is for the next three months in the museum, and Sid is not allowed to talk. So, wait a minute, Sid. Yes, oh, she's a little bit of a ham. Okay, yeah, mhm. I have taught Sid some sign language, because Sid, according to the TV, is only allowed to talk when he's on TV. So Sid, what do you have to say to the council? Thank you and hello. Thank you, Sid. Now go back and take that stuff off.
Thank you, Sid.
It is not easy to get into that. But you can imagine when Sid comes out at the museum how excited the kids are to see Sid.
It's the first thing I was told by my four-year-old when I got home yesterday. He was very excited.
Yes, they love Sid. And Sid, for those of you like me who do not have young kids, is actually an active TV show, and we have an exhibit called Sid the Science Kid that opened last month and is there, and I'll tell you more about it. But we were the recipient at everybody else's low attendance during the month of January and February, and we love it, because it really did help. In the month of January, we had 6,400 people with three days, over 600 a day, and in February, 8,046 visitors with three days, over 600, and one day, over 800, which, if you've been to our museum, you can imagine it was a little bit crowded on that day. But it was great for us to have that kind of attendance. And just to let you know, that we continue to do our discovery camp, our weekend workshops, our school tour program, which is widely supported locally by a lot of foundations, so we're able to give a lot of at-risk kids free admission during the school tour. Museums on the Go program, which was funded by the Barker Foundation, has repaired our van, and we're actually taking our programs out to the surrounding valleys who cannot come in to the museum. And that's a new program for us that we will begin in the next couple of weeks. And one of the largest increases has been in our toddler enrollment programs, and this program is up 68% over last year. We have, to date, over 1,200 kids that participate, and this morning, they made, on Thursdays as little chefs, and the kids made green pretzels. And it was quite interesting. But they will eat whatever they make, even if they wouldn't eat it at home. But Tuesdays are young scientists, and we are fortunate to have the master gardeners who come in and teach classes. And on Fridays, we have play power, and on Saturdays, we are bringing back a program for working parents called Creative Tots. There we go. That's little scientists, and you can see the one on the left really enjoyed the chocolate cookies that they made a couple of weeks ago. Not sure the parents always like what the activities are, but I keep telling them to come in dirty clothes. And this one is something you bought for us. This is the mud kitchen. And the mud kitchen comes out, and the kids get to play in mud. And we have some VIPs in these pictures, which, if you don't know, are the children of the city manager, who happened to be there this week when we brought the mud kitchen out. But this was bought partly with, or with part of the funding that you gave us this year. And again, parents are not so crazy about it, but the kids love playing with mud. But I don't know about you, some of you are at least my age. We used to do that all the time as kids, so we're bringing it back. This is actually a picture of the item that is coming, that is the other half of your funding this year. And we need a space for crawlers. So in the next two to three weeks, however long it takes to get this, next to Toddler Town in the museum will become Baby Town, and it will be a protected space for babies who are crawling and moving around, but not yet walking. So we'll have toddler space and baby space, and this unit was purchased with the money from the city, so thank you again. If you haven't been lately, these are two of the musical instruments that the Sweet Stuff Foundation has funded, and they just gave us money for two more that will be installed in the next three to four weeks out. And it is really a fun exhibit. It's quite loud, so it's good that it's outside. But every once in a while, somebody who actually plays musics will come along, and you can hear the music all over the grounds. Again, it's part of the effort to increase our outdoor exhibitory. And I have to share this with you, because it continues to be probably the most popular thing in the, or in the outdoor experience, but we have people asking for the tri-track, which is the city of Rancho Mirage tri-track, every day. And we don't have staffing to keep it open all day, but as volunteers come, we do keep it up open every morning. This year, we began our event base with Touch a Truck, and increased almost 500 extra people this year, to the point where it's now created a problem. We have a parking issue, which I haven't figured out how to resolve yet. But this is one of my favorite pictures. The kids love the large trucks, and this little guy did not want to leave the big truck, so we positioned him as is. We followed that with Boozeam, which is a wee bit scary and a little bit spooky, and it's designed for kids our age to introduce them into the concept of Halloween with all of things being safe, nothing with blood, nothing with coffins, nothing that's scary. And we had everything from Spider-Man to Vincent Van Gogh dressed up. And you can't see our sweetheart there, but he was equipped with a palette of colors, his paintbrush, but what you can't see is on his left ear, there is a Band-Aid. So he came fully dressed to be Vincent Van Gogh, and we kind of think that that might be what he looked at when Vincent was a child. We had holiday happenings, everything from Hanukkah to milk and cookies with Santa, which, as exciting as it was, was a nightmare, because instead of the 250 people who had signed up, we had 680 that showed up, again producing another parking challenge. And to the right is our gingerbread-making contest, and our biggest challenge there is to get the parents to leave the gingerbread alone and let their kids do it. We followed that with Happy New Year, and we do a countdown to Noon Year. At five minutes to 12 on December 31st, we drop 1,000 balloons, we take a toast with apple cider, and pass out chocolate kisses with "for good luck." And last year, we had close to 400 people. This year, as you can see, we had a few more. We had to move it outside, and we had 1,400 people show up for Noon Year, again producing a parking challenge. And a new challenge with 1,000 balloons not quite being enough. So we were very excited. This is really one of the favorite events of the Children's Museum, and I'm not sure if the parents don't like it more than the kids. It relieves them of their guilt for leaving their kids that night to go out and party. We have coming up on March 30, 23rd, the All-American Discovery Duck Pluck, and thanks to the city of Rancho for being one of our sponsors, we will pull out with the assistance of Mayor Kite. Out of our 5,000 ducks, we will pull out ducks to match gifts that we have acquired at the river. It's really fun, and the kids do like it. Following that is the butterfly release. April 6th, we distribute caterpillars, and the children adopt the caterpillars and sign adoption papers to take care of the caterpillar. They learn about it, and then the following week, they bring it back, and they make a butterfly bungalow, so that when the caterpillar comes to a chrysalis, they can take care of it. And then April 20th, by then, the butterflies have hatched, and they bring them back, and we release them in our garden. Very popular, and the kids really enjoy that. We have a new event coming up in May at a new adult event called the Chocolate Soiree, and it's being hosted this year at The Perch, and it's where we invite Rancho Mirage and other chefs to create their most outstanding chocolate dessert, and there's a competition with that. And we will, that night, honor our Great Friend to Kids Award, which this year is Jim Murdoch. And we are very excited to continue that tradition. Followed by the Fourth of July Parade at the river, where it's very hot, and it's always amazing to me how many people want to come out and watch around the river on the Fourth of July, but it does work. And then in the summer, we are still working on money, but we hope to bring our next traveling exhibit, which is XO XO. It's an exhibit about love and forgiveness, and will focus on anti-bullying and being kind. That is followed by the dinosaur exhibit in the fall, and we do have almost all of the funding for dinosaurs, so we're very excited about that. And then you met Sid. Sid is there now. And Sid is the exhibit. It comes from the museum in St. Louis, one of the best traveling exhibit producers in the country. It took us, everybody I could browbeat, everybody who could be voluntold, and everybody on staff, literally five days, 12 hours a day, putting up Sid. So if any of you are so inclined around the middle of May, we will need to take Sid down. And for an organization that only has one male, this is always a challenge. But Sid came up, and he is loved. It is complete with a full treehouse, a car. Guess who's in that car? In fact, the one on the left with the hat did not want to get out of the car, so good luck with that, Dad. And I want to say a thank you. The new HVAC saved us last summer, and we are truly thankful for that. The two new exhibits that you funded this year, the sponsorship, and more importantly, this is very important, and you've almost totally funded our ability to go forward with the design for play, which will be a master plan for the use of our outdoor exhibitory. And we are very excited. This will begin in the spring, and anyone who wants to participate, please come. You know, it's the spirit at the museum that counts. The time may seem long for me, that I've been here three years and I don't have everything fixed, and the vehicle may be a little strange. Sometimes it looks like Sid, and sometimes it looks like a mud kitchen, and totally unexpected, which is really one of our goals. But if the dream is held close to the heart and the imagination is applied to whatever there is close at hand, everything is still possible, and we believe in that. And I would like to end by introducing the people at my team that make this magic happen. There's Carrie, who is in charge of operations. Victoria, who's in charge of marketing and development. And Gregoria, who assisted Sid, is in charge of programs. And Ashley, who you don't recognize, was Sid, and gets to do everything to manage the galleries and hold everybody in attendance. And a very, very strong heartfelt thank you. The Children's Museum loves the city of Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Oh, you're welcome.
Carol, it's amazing.
...who have not been up to the museum. We certainly encourage you to go out, take a look what's going on. You will see so many kids running around in different directions, you'll wonder what's going on, but they do a great job. Over the three years that Carol has been at the museum, she's taken it from virtually nothing to a thriving organization today. So we work very closely with the museum. They're great partners, and we want to see the museum succeed in the future, and we need all of you to help us. So Carol, great, great job. Thanks for coming again today.
I was going to say, I've been to some of the events at the museum, and as Carol said, parking is a challenge. The events are so popular, and the kids have such a good time, as well as the parents. So congratulations to all of you for all your hard work.
Okay, we'll now move on to the third item under our presentations, and this is the announcement of a town hall forum by the Community Emergency Preparedness Commission. And here representing the commission is Mary Lou Suter, who was appointed to the Community Emergency Preparedness Commission in June of 2014, and has served as the chairman's or the commission's chairwoman since June of 2018. Been a busy person, and you've been leading the organization very well. We really appreciate it, Mary.
Thank you, Mayor Kite. It's a pleasure to be here, and greetings to you and to all the council members and to your guests today, and to all the Rancho Mirage television viewers as well. And I'm delighted to be here today to invite you all to a very, very special event that I'm so excited about. And this presentation from the Children's Museum really set the stage for us to think about children, because that's what this emergency preparedness event is about. So why am I excited about it? Well, the title of the event is Earthquakes: What to Tell the Children You Love and How to Say It. It's an important topic, but it's seldom discussed. So the information provided at this forum will include talking about the needs of children in a disaster, and ways to reduce children's vulnerability during a disaster. So if you can picture all the children there at the Children's Discovery Museum, those beautiful little ones, and in the midst of something like a major earthquake, that's what this event will talk to you about. Who's invited to this event? The forum will continue the Rancho Mirage tradition of offering free events that are open to everyone. For this particular event, we hope that parents, grandparents, great-grandparents, teachers, and really anyone who loves children will attend the event and learn ways to teach their children about disaster readiness. So who are the speakers for this event? Would you pull up the slide for the event, please? I think now would be a good time. Thank you. There will be two remarkable presenters at the event. The first will be Lori Peak, and she's a professor of sociology at the University of Colorado at Boulder, and she's also the director of the Natural Hazards Center. She's co-authored and authored several books. I'm currently in the process of reading a book called Children of Katrina, which is an absolutely fascinating sociological look at seven specific children. She follows those children over a period of seven years post-Katrina, and talks about how they manage to grow and thrive post-Katrina, after that disaster. And she talks about some of the things in their present life that either made them very successful, coming back, bouncing back, or from that event, and some of the things in their lives that did not help with their success. So she bases, her talk will be based on her scientific knowledge. She'll be a very interesting speaker to hear. The other speaker at the event is Marcia Stein, and Marcia is an educator. She's a trained counselor, and she's a graduate of the American Red Cross Preparedness, Emergency Preparedness Training Program. Marcia has instructed more than 1,000 children here across the Coachella Valley, so this brings the idea much closer to home for us. And in their schools, she's taught this preparedness activity in the school setting. Marcia is the immediate past-chair of this Emergency Preparedness Commission, and she led the commission for seven years. During that time, she reached thousands of residents through her activities, the activities she organized and led. So now you know why I'm excited about the event. It'll be an amazing, amazing event that we'll all gain so much knowledge from. When is the forum? The next forum will take place on Wednesday, March 27th, at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory. There'll be a champagne reception, again, at 5:30, and then the presentation itself will begin at 6:00 PM. Now, I hope you're as excited as I am, and I hope you will all attend, and I hope the television viewing audience will attend as well. So thank you for this opportunity. I'm grateful for it, and I know the whole commission is grateful for all your support. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Okay, we'll now move on to non-agenda public comments, and this is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on today's agenda, and you can speak for a maximum up to three minutes. So we have individuals who have turned in the request form to speak. If you would still like to speak and haven't turned in a form, they're available over at the city clerk. So we'll begin with Katie Stice.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff, and guests today. I'm Katie Stice, your executive director for the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce, and I'm thrilled to say we are finally fully staffed. I'd like to introduce you to Rhonda Henry. She's our operation and events manager. She's just two weeks old. And Sandy Cloyd, she's our membership sales executive. So you'll be seeing these faces... So, you'll be seeing these faces out at our events, out in the community, representing the Chamber of Commerce. And we could not be happier. I am so relieved to have some help and we're really thrilled to move in a positive direction. So, I wanted to make sure they had a chance to say hello.
Good afternoon, everyone. I know most of you and I am so grateful to be a part of the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce and to be able to serve our community here. Thank you.
I'm happy to be here also. Nice to meet everybody. Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. In addition, just a quick update for you. We have a power lunch coming up at Norma's Italian Kitchen, a grand opening and ribbon cutting at O'Kane's Irish Pub. We've all been waiting a while for that to happen. We have an Italian night mixer at Old Spaghetti Factory, a business over breakfast covering Gen Z entering the workforce. And we also, of course, have our State of the City coming up, April 12th. That's going to be held at Ritz-Carlton. We already have over 100 signed up for that. We hope to fill up the room at the Ritz and sponsors are also signing up. The last thing I want to tell you about is I am taking some of my board members to Western Association of Chamber Executives Conference. It's called the ABCs of a Successful Chamber and it's an intensive chamber leaders workshop for board members and CEOs or executive directors. So, we're really stepping up our game, running into 2019, ready to roll. Thank you so much for all of your support to the Chamber of Commerce and to me as well. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. And thanks, thank you for the new additions to your staff. Next speaker is Melissa Ritchie.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager and guests. I also have something nice to talk about today, which I'm sure you're welcome. On behalf of the Rancho Mirage community, the nonprofit Preservation Mirage Organization and mid-century modern fans everywhere, I want to thank the city for its sponsorship of Modernism Week this year. Now in its 14th year, Modernism Week's success is hard to ignore. Few events can claim a visitor increase of 20% year-on-year from across the USA and around the world, but that's the case with this architecture festival. The interest in mid-century modern architecture shows no sign verbatim, which is why my book, Mod Mirage, which I presented earlier, continues to be a bestseller in the architecture category. According to Modernism Week organizers, the national publicity around the book encouraged more people than ever to discover mid-century attractions in Rancho Mirage. All the events held here were resounding successes, starting with a lecture I gave about the city's creation, then Sunnylands, which always sells out, and the space age talk at the library. New this year were tours at Tamres West, where seven homeowners from two HOAs opened their doors on February 17th. The event sold 600 tickets. In spite of almost getting derailed by the huge storm on February 14th that nearly washed out Frank Sinatra Drive, the organizers made arrangements with parking at Bernis to shuttle visitors to Tamres West. And the restaurant reported a 20% increase in dinner attendees as a result and has already offered its services for next year. Our community Tamres Ranches sold 450 tickets. Deval Estates sold out with 360 visitors. Tamres Country Club, presented by Preservation Mirage, sold out in one day, 300 tickets to see four homes. Tamres Gardens also sold tickets for its Chocolate Martini Home Tour. And other Rancho Mirage homes were open to Modernism Week visitors, welcoming 415 at the East Stewart Williams Kennerston Residence and 500 at the Simons Residence, part of the Signature Home Tour. Rancho Mirage residents were number four purchasers of Modernism Week tickets, proving that mid-century architecture is a major crowd pleaser for residents and visitors alike. Statistics show that 4,000 visitors came to Rancho Mirage events between the 14th and 24th. We look forward to another hugely successful year for Modernism Week events next year and thank you again to the city.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Alan Worthy. Alan?
I was hoping my friends, I have to say, before the clock starts, my friends about to Salt and Sea are here. If I can have another minute, you know, they're going to speak. I am so proud of them and people in this desert that come forward and work together. We were at the Palm Springs Council meeting last night and they were meeting out front impromptu, joy silver and working hard. So, unfortunately, as you all know, the shooting at Rancho, I mean, at Eisenhower on Monday, I'm going to say the shooting because some people don't watch the news and had not heard about it. I'm sorry to say that was the proverbial train, you know, the proverbial train coming. And that is why I had been and had earlier on what, in a quagmire, if you will, if nothing else, asking the people at the top there to resign. So, now you know that I was not kidding. The hospital is not HIPAA compliant and I have a letter from Director of Risk Management, Celine Kaiser, to prove it. It's enough is enough. That is a miracle. Apparently that was, what was that? A suicide by cop, I guess, because he was, surely would have murdered the doctor, but thank God and according to his son, he was not out to, you know, commit another mass murder that this country is known for. So, that was a godsend. But that was also a wake-up call. And, you know, the whole thing has been such a travesty. You each have now, again, I may have done it before, I can't even recall, a copy of this flyer. And this is, again, I think I did reference it, I have standing against the hospital for failing to address this insurance claim that I would have had. And with Ms. Kaiser's letter, I was deprived of it. And in so doing, you will see on the bullet points of the letter, the doctors were not paid. The services were not paid. It's ruined my credit. It's affecting my career and my ability to go back to work. And with that letter, there is the culpability with not being HIPAA compliant. I don't know if you saw on Channel 3 last week, there was a segment they did about the doctor shortage in the desert. Well, no kidding. If I were Dr. Stansel, I'd be in a closed-door meeting right now. I grew up at a house that this is not tolerated. Soul, I'm going to use that word. It's one of the words that Mary Baker Eddy gave us as a synonym for God. And President and CEO Aubrey Zerfling, you need to do some soul searching. Chief Counsel Michael Appelhans, you need to do some soul searching. Celine Kaiser, Director of Risk Management, you are no such thing and you need to resign. This is not going to stop. They did not heed not one of my warnings long before I asked them to resign. That, I know, I said to all of you kind people, that was in the 11th hour. And the very idea of my going to the bar, R to the Department of Health and Human Services, if I have to go back there, that is a fine and they could shut down that hospital. They are not HIPAA compliant, they are not 501(c)(3) compliant. I'm saying that here today, it has to stop. Those doctors will lose their license. It's enough. That is what this forum is for and you're fined, counsel.
Alan, would you please wind up a little bit?
Sorry?
Could you wind up your?
Yeah, I was just going to say, there are no words to express my gratitude to all of you, to upholding the rule of law and giving me this time for the betterment of everyone here in the city and in the valley and for these doctors and professionals. Thank you. There are no words to express my gratitude to you. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Felice Nuez.
I don't know if you remember me, I'm a retired nurse and I was here last month. I'm here to speak on behalf of the concept of bringing clean water to the Salton Sea and putting clean water out to the Colorado River. And I don't know where this water is coming from, but I would, I am very grateful that you are considering the fact that this is needed because of the health crisis at the Salton Sea. As you know, there's nosebleeds, there's asthma, there's a cancer cluster amongst the Border Patrol that's growing and these are the people that protect our borders and our frontier. And also, you know that there's the Calipatria Prison where we have all our guards taking care of the prisoners and making sure that everything is secure. So, all of these institutions are being threatened right now. But also, the whole Imperial Valley and Coachella Valley will be affected because the world turns, the wind blows, the water flows, and the Salton Sea is full of pesticides. And it was also used as a bombing range by our military defense so that there's a lot of ammunition that's still at the bottom of the sea that's very toxic. And I, I think that right now, one of the priorities is to consider covering that toxic and cleaning it in the future and all in the name of at least our children, if not ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Parker.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you again about the Salton Sea problem. I want to thank City Manager Hagerman for, he communicated to us that he is continuing to study this problem. He also let us know that he has received opposition to our amendment from the Executive Director of the Salton Sea Authority. This is really no surprise to us because one of the problems, one of the big problems in solving the Salton Sea problem is that there are a lot of entrenched leaders, people in leadership of organizations who have authority over the Salton Sea, whose thinking is stuck in the past, who are not open to new ideas. And so, that's one of the reasons why we have decided to come to the city councils and ask you and people like you in other cities who are more in touch with your constituents to make a decision about what needs to be done. Last night in Palm Springs, we brought our amendment before the city council and we ran into another source of opposition. Pat Cooper, who is one of the staff of Supervisor Manuel Perez, was there and she expressed her opposition to the amendment as well. And her statements revealed, written to us, how uninformed she really is about this ocean water issue. She, one of her main points of opposition was that there has been no support from Mexico on the part of any elected official. And this is not true. It's all in those proposals that the state of California has. There's been a lot of support expressed down there because these proposals, if implemented, would create a lot of economic development for the people that live down there. So, our, and our coalition has met with Supervisor Perez in the past. And we've told him that we think his North Lake proposal, which is the center of the MOU, is, it could be a good thing, but in order to make it successful, we're concerned that there isn't enough water to fill it up and maintain it like it needs to be maintained. So, we would like you to keep an open mind. We would like to offer to participate in a study session if that is something you guys would consider because it's very difficult to bring up everything that's relevant in public comment. And we'd be glad to participate with representatives from Supervisor Perez's office or the Salton Sea Authority or whoever, in order to really vet the kind of things that we need to address here. So, thank you very much for your time and hopefully we'll be seeing you again at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Robert Mueller.
Good afternoon, mayor, council and staff. My name's Robert Mueller. I'm a resident of Rancho Mirage. We were here a couple of weeks ago regarding concerns about the Salton Sea. And I want to thank the council for approving the MOU, I think in December. And about two weeks ago, we brought an amendment that we were recommending that the council consider. I also want to thank Mr. Hagerman for his very thoughtful response. And we also recognize that while there are many organizations and many people, all of whom seem to agree that the Salton Sea is in a very dire situation, there are some differences in viewpoint about how to reconcile that. So, we met last night with the author of the MOU and we are going to work, I think, from this point on to reconcile any differences that there are and hopefully we'll be seeing you again with a reconciled proposal. So, thank you again for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you. Bob Terry.
Good afternoon, Bob Terry with the Salton Sea Coalition and with People Over Pollution. We have come to the cities to ask them to make this amendment. We understand you guys have already voted to approve it. We've gone to the cities that had not taken the vote on it yet. Desert Hot Springs voted five to nothing unanimously and enthusiastically to support our amendment to the MOU. Then we went to Palm Desert and they voted three to two to support it. The two that voted against it were actually voting against the rest of the MOU. They were very affirmative with our amendment. We're going to the cities because we believe that you guys know your constituents and know what they want. We believe that you, you've heard from them. We want to vet the idea, to fully vet the idea of bringing in seawater. Now, we're not trying to force the state or anyone to bring in seawater. What we're trying to force them to do is to do the engineering that is required because it takes so long. The amount of money it's going to take is very small compared to the amount that's being poured into the Salton Sea. Already, 200 million has been set aside for the 10-year plan with another, 286 million, with another 200 million being proposed. The engineering, and there already been three companies that have been approved by our ex-governor to go forward with plans, that they've been chosen out of the 13, I think, that submitted, the RFI. Engineering should cost, estimate it from one to two million. We believe it should come out of the 10-year plan funds that are already there, that we should get working on the engineering so that in five years from now, three years from now, when it's decided that we need to be bringing in seawater, we're not wasting more time. We've wasted 30 years. It's long enough, get rolling on something that can be, be towards the long-range plan. So, what we have proposed is to add a whereas. The parties are supportive of comprehensive analysis of ocean water importation as a long-term solution for the restoration of the Salton Sea. The parties respectfully request that ocean water importation be incorporated into the state's SSMP long-term plan. End. And that's it. By the way, there is no long-term plan. This would be the start of a long-term plan. And that's what we're asking the cities to push for so that we can push the Salton Sea Authority, so we can push their supervisors, so we can push the state to get hopping and quit wasting our time and our lives. To that end, we did have a resolution agreed to unanimously by 100 delegates of the Green Party of California to support seawater importation to the Salton Sea. These are people from anywhere from Oregon, from the border to San Diego. After a two-day presentation unanimously agreed that we need to do this. One of the things that was on this resolution... One of the things that was on this resolution was to continue mitigation water. We were not successful in getting the governor to continue that. We thought we could use the, a few more years of mitigation water while we're deciding what's going to really happen with the Salton Sea. So, we're asking you guys to consider adding our amendment, to bring it back up. Like I say, the two cities that we've gone to have agreed to it, and Palm Springs is going to take it back up again after more discussion. So, thank you for your time, and
Mr. Mayor?
We're looking for your support.
Thank you very much. Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Terry, for coming here. I've followed Bob Terry's career now for at least two or three or four years. I've lost track, but I know that he's not a crackpot. He's a very sincere, well-educated person who is pursuing solutions to probably the biggest future problem that the valley will ever see, and hopefully, survive. And what I would like us to do is I would like us to have a, hold a, a meeting of our council, informational meeting, where we discuss the amendment that Mr. Terry and others are promoting, so that we can see if we can get a majority to support what they're doing. I think it's important that we do something beyond listen to what you're saying and people who are allied with you, and it's extremely important that we speak out on the largest issue of the day. So, I would ask Isaiah if we couldn't put that together, a study session on that amendment, so that we can take some future action to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hobart.
Thank you. Next speaker, Brad Anderson.
Thank you, Brad Anderson, Ferber Drive, Rancho Mirage. I wanted to, I just wanted to take a moment. I noticed on the minutes of the last board meeting, they were incorrectly misphrasing me, so I went ahead and submitted a letter. I'll submit it, I know you can't correct minutes, but amendment, I guess, but, and that was concerning, home beekeeping, residential beekeeping, and I guess the city manager is going to request a district information on if the chemicals that they used for the 80s giptite program with the vector control would harm the bees, and of course, it would. But I included those chemicals along with my letter, and hopefully, you can place that in the public record, so everybody can see it. I just wanted to mention, too, I have maybe a pilot program I'd like to, maybe off of the city, but I'm going to do it myself at my home in my neighborhood with the help of my neighbors, and it's a trapping program for mosquitoes. Because this year, I believe it's just going to get worse and worse, and having major issues with the vector control district, I know they, they're not performing the duties they need to perform in my neighborhood, and I just wanted to emphasize that I know they have a technician in Rancho Mirage, and I can bet the city can probably request maybe man hours or technician hours that they spend in the city, and I bet it's probably five hours a week. And we have the tax assessment that hopefully would pay for mosquito control and INATs and flies, and those programs don't even exist anymore. But I don't want to be negative, I want to be positive, and I think a trapping program is the way to go. We don't even have to monitor the traps. They have very, very smart traps nowadays. They can even determine the type of species by the wing beat. So, it's very, very cutting-edge stuff. But I would like to see that take place, and I guess that's about it. Technician trap program minutes. And if I'm going to leave on a positive note, I'm not going to say anymore.
Don't leave on that note. Answer this question. What experience have you got at the moment with respect to the presence of mosquitoes in Rancho Mirage? Who's testing and who's doing something about it?
Well, that's a lot. The vector control, I know my requests are not heard and not responded to, and that may be an isolated matter, just because of the issues I've had with the district, or defending myself. Last year's budget actually had attorney fees for me, and I'm sure it's going to take place again this year when they do the budget, and that's a shame. But as far as mosquitoes, neglected swimming pools, big one. I happen to know that they're right next to some people's houses, and I know the city probably pumps those out, but I'm really not at a point to actually address the vector control anymore, because they may take a point not to service that area. And then, then that person that lives next to that pool is out of luck, but luckily, that person has a little clout in the city. But, and the drains and stuff, there's a lot of issues that I have with the mosquito control, and hopefully, I answered all the questions. I don't know if I did. But it's going to be an ongoing thing, because it is, it's an ongoing thing. And it's about public health. And the 80s giptite, it's been allowed by the vector district to just take over this valley, and I'm not under emphasizing that. And the reason is because of lack of management experience, I think. But, and I think rats have a big, that's my opinion. I think they're feeding on rats, and that's the blood meal, but that's, they could do tests like that, they could find that out, instead of testing sunscreens and all this stuff that's already been done. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Wally Melendez.
Good afternoon, City Council of Rancho Mirage staff. My name's Wally Melendez, and I want to bring up a subject that I've brought before, and that is, and which I believe that the city of Rancho Mirage is more connected to than maybe is generally realized, which is the College of the Desert. The College of the Desert was started, as you all know, around 1958, late 50s, early 60s. It's a two-year college. And a two-year college is not a good idea. Two-year college connotes a vocational school. Now, I attend all the, for the district trustee meetings at the college. They have one every month, and I brought up the subject, and of course, there's interested people, but I want to draw a lot of interest, not only from Palm Desert, from Rancho Mirage, which I believe, like I've said before, are sort of like sister cities. And so, so I find out that somebody that, in the first place, oh, I've got one minute. In the first place, a lot of the kids down there are very young, and they're very resilient. And so, when you ask them, well, you know, you're going to come up with a bachelor's degree, oh, yeah, then I can transfer to either San Bernardino or Riverside. Well, they already come indoctrinated from the high schools thinking those ideas, which are wrong, when they can get a bachelor's degree right in their home valley. Now, think about this also, about the Coachella Valley. It's a very unique place with a harsh terrain in the summer. What best to build up the scientists in a four-year college, instead of transferring somewhere else? This is a lot of talent that we're losing for the Coachella Valley. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker is Patrick O'Dowd.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I wish Sid the Science Kid would have stuck around and given my talk for me, but he left, so I'm here. I am a board member of the Coachella Valley Water District, and I also serve on the Salton Sea Authority Board of Directors. And I wasn't planning on coming by today, but I'm glad that I did, and listened to the comments with respect to the amendment to the resolution. I frankly wasn't familiar with it until today, but while the speakers were informing the council, I was able to find out a little bit more information about it. I don't know of a member of the Salton Sea Authority who is inherently opposed to a sea-to-sea solution. I think it's a fascinating concept. Everything that I've studied in that regard suggests that the costs are prospectively prohibitive, especially when the state of California is responsible for paying the bills. But that doesn't mean it's not a good idea and shouldn't be pursued. I think the only question, and I wouldn't discourage the council from further considering whether they should support an amendment to the resolution, the only question is I know that the resolutions being put forth are in support of efforts by Imperial and Riverside County to form community facilities districts to fund a specific project under the 10-year plan. So, I don't, I don't know that it's particularly disruptive to the process, but I don't know that it's particularly relevant to the process either. But the main reason I'm here is just to suggest that, to the extent that I can help in any way, to inform the conversation, to bridge the gap, and to facilitate a solution, that that's what I'm here for, and I'm happy to do it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for the comments. I'm sure, and I'm sure we can invite Mr. O'Dowd to our study session.
I'm welcome to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak that is not on an agenda item for today? Okay, we will close non-agenda public comments, and we'll go to city council comments, and I believe, begin with Charlie.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, can I take my lozenge out? Yes, I have something to say. Change glasses. On the issue of homelessness, the Coachella Valley continues to grow each and every day. More families and individuals are in need of food, shelter, and resources to help them return to a life of self-sufficiency. Rancho Mirage has been a long supporter to help end homelessness in the valley. We are contributing to Roy's Shelter over the years with the support of over $1 million. With the closure of Roy's, Rancho Mirage continued to support the cause by last year splitting our contribution of $103,000, with $60,000 of that going to the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, and $35,000 went to the Path of Life Ministries AC VAG Housing First Program. This year, the city will fulfill our share with funding of $100,000, a request from the Coachella Valley Association of Governments in partnership with the Desert Healthcare District for the CV Housing First Program. This $100,000 will be matched dollar-for-dollar by the Desert Healthcare District Foundation, giving a total of $200,000 to the program on behalf of the city of Rancho Mirage. Rancho Mirage will also continue to contribute an additional $60,000 plus to eight other charitable organizations in the valley to help the homeless, as we have done last year and through the years. So, Rancho Mirage has always been there to support the homeless and the crisis of homeless in the Coachella Valley. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good report, Charlie. Good information. Bring us up to date. Dana, do you have anything to say?
Oh, I've said enough so far today.
Okay. You can always speak later if you'd like. Iris.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Attendees of the February 26th Rancho Mirage Speaker Series were treated to a compelling and very enlightening evening with Dr. Drew Pinsky. A doctor of internal and addiction medicine, Dr. Drew spoke about the path to freedom from drug and alcohol addiction, shared his views on the opioid crisis gripping the United States, and what an important role recovery plays in patients breaking free from the grip of dependence. Needless to say, the topics Dr. Drew touched on were so profound, interesting, and educational, that I think most of us could have listened to him for at least another hour. And during the VIP reception, Dr. Drew was very gracious with his time, posing for photos and engaging in conversation with attendees. He was absolutely delightful in every way imaginable. And again, just a few words of thank you to Aqua California Bistro for the delicious food and wine, and to the lovely and talented harpist Lynn Lockwood for her beautiful music. And I would also like to take a moment to recognize the staff at Eisenhower Health and the Helene Galen Auditorium. To Suzanne Carlson, Erin Green, and Lee Rice, many thanks for all your help with this wonderful series, and for all the years you've been working with us. Your valued assistance is so much appreciated. But most important, I would like to extend a huge thank you to our truly amazing staff members. Year after year, event after event, they are always there, doing everything possible to make sure that every detail is covered regarding setup, teardown, safety measures, and the comfort of every attendee. So, whether it's our speaker series, Wine and Food Festival, Art Affair, Writers' Festival, ongoing library and observatory events, or the special attractions at our amphitheater, our dedicated staff members are always there, working and lending their expertise, even in the rain. And last, but certainly not least, the final speaker of our 2019 series, Elizabeth Vargas, will speak on Tuesday, March 26th. Limited seats are still available. All you need to do is purchase tickets, and you can do that by going to rmspeakerseries.com. And if you need some assistance, please don't hesitate to call City Hall at 760-324-4511. Thank you, have a great day, and we look forward to seeing you at the next Speaker Series event. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Iris. And Ted, do you have a comment for this today?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, February 24th, the Palm Springs Police Officers Association sponsored the Running from the Law 5K. This event honors fallen officers whose lives were taken in the line of duty in 2018. 100% of the proceeds raised from this year's event was donated to the family of Corporal Ronald Singh, who was killed in the line of duty on December 26th, 2018. I'm proud to share members from city staff, our Rancho Mirage Police Department, and the Explorers Program participated in this heartfelt run. It's wonderful to see the community come together in such a strong show of support for law enforcement and for all fallen heroes. This Run from the Law truly was for a good cause. We are very proud of the members of the Sheriff's Department assigned to Rancho Mirage. We feel they are part of the staff. I want to thank Captain Jason Husky I want to thank Captain Jason Husky, who has made his home here in Rancho Mirage for many years, Lieutenant Mike Manning, and Sergeant Frank Chivoni. There are 30 officers dedicated to our city that provide safety to the 922-70 ZIP code. Thank you to all the men and women that put their life on the line every day for us. I encourage you to meet them and say thanks when we have our regular coffee with the cops. Thank you on behalf of the city council and all of our residents that take comfort knowing you are protecting our families. And in closing, I just want to remind everyone that we're all subject to crime of some kind, whether it be petty theft or otherwise. And we all have to be very vigilant about how we protect ourselves. A constant reminder is, when you have things in your cars, put them in the trunk. Don't make them visible to anyone that might be tempted. And as far as your own safety at home is concerned, make certain that your doors at night, your sliders are closed and locked, your windows are secured. Generally, this is where the robberies take place. It's because we've made it easy in a temptation. So be vigilant along those lines. And again, thank you to law enforcement for everything you do. We really appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Well, today, I'm really excited about announcing a new program for the City of Rancho Mirage. It's the inaugural Rancho Mirage Amateur Golf Championship to be held on Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday, March 26th and 27th. This will be a two-day tournament held at the Westin Mission Hills on the Pete Dye Resort Course and the Gary Player Signature Course. It's only open to amateur golfers with the established GHIN handicap. No other city in the valley offers a tournament such as this one. This is a wonderful opportunity for golfers both in and outside of Rancho Mirage to play these beautiful courses. There's a gross reward and a net competition award. Entry fee includes two rounds of golf. Can you beat that? Two rounds of golf, two breakfast, and an award luncheon. This is really unique for this kind of a tournament. So fees include two rounds of golf, one on each course, two breakfast, and an award luncheon. There'll be tea prizes and trophies, and the cost is only $225 for Rancho Mirage residents and $250 for non-residents. The deadline for registration is March 19th. You can register now on www/playmissionhills.com under the Events section for the City of Rancho Mirage. You can also pick up registration forms here at City Hall. This is a new event, and it's an exciting addition, so you don't want to miss it. So remember, that's Wednesday and Thursday, 26th and 27th of March. So that ends the comments for the day for all the council and the public. And we'll now move on to the next item, which is the minutes from the February 21st meeting. If I could have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Here's the motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to the consent calendar presented by Isaiah, our city manager. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, you have six items on your consent calendar today for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt ordinance number 1147, adding Chapter 10.57, Shared On-Demand Motorized Scooters to Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic to the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to prohibit shared on-demand motorized scooters from being, one, offered for use, or, two, placed on or operated within any public property or right-of-way in the city's jurisdictional boundaries. Item number three is the consideration of appointing Stanton Markowitz to serve as the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission's at-large, non-voting park owner representative. Item number four is to authorize a letter of support for Assembly Bill 854, adding Section 21562.7 to the water code, and this would allow for local representation in the Coachella Valley on the IID Board. We do have a request to speak on this item, so I would ask that the council would pull this from consent. Item number five is to approve three special assistance awards to three qualified nonprofits for a total of $12,500. And item number six are demands, and staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, less item number four? Motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Well, now move back to item number four, and Isaiah, you want to cover that?
Sure. So the letter of support for Assembly Bill 854, right now, one of the issues with any area in the Coachella Valley that is covered by IID, there are no representatives on the IID Board from the Coachella Valley. So we do have a section within Rancho Mirage that is serviced by IID. And this bill is being promoted by Chad Mays and his office, and it would allow for local representation in the Coachella Valley on the IID Board.
Okay, thank you. There was a request to speak on this item. Brad Anderson, would you like to come forward?
Yes, hi, Brad Anderson, Rancho Mirage, forever drive. Thank you. Yeah, I don't know very much about anything, and this is one of them, but I think it's a great step forward, this type of legislation, to allow people input into that organization. And I think it's a great thing, so I'm fairly in support of that. And I would like to see that type of arrangement or type of thing go like towards the mosquito district too, where that's an appointment position, and they're raising assessment taxes. So I don't have any representation there, but I think this is do-over. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions on this item? Can we have a motion to approve item number four?
I would make that motion. I'd like also to point out, I think that Supervisor Perez is also supporting Chad Mays's motion or Chad Mays's bill. Anyway, I move that we approve a letter of support.
Second. It's a motion to approve. A second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to the public hearings. And item number seven is Resolution Number 2019, next in order, calling an election on levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to the Community Facilities District Number One. And Kofi, you're on this item. Kofi is the Director of Administration Services. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. This is the second step in the standard process for the city's annexation process into CFD Number One. The first step was considered at the February 7, 2019 council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located on the northeast corner of Dyna Shaw Drive and Los Alamos Road, commonly referred to as the Del Webb Project. The entire project is slated to have 1,200 dwelling units and an 18,000-square-foot clubhouse to build out. Annexation Number 178 covers 307 of those residential lots. On February 7, 2019, the council adopted Resolution Number 2019-05, declaring its intention to annex this territory to CFD Number One, and to levy a special tax and set the time and place for a public hearing on the proposed annexation. The petition filed by the owner allows for a shortening of the time for the special election to expedite the annexation process. As such, the public hearing on the proposed annexation and levy of a special tax may take place at today's meeting. And in the absence of a majority protest, the special election on levying the special tax may also take place at today's meeting. At the conclusion of today's public hearing, provided written protests have not been filed, the city council may consider adoption of the attached resolution, calling an election on levying a special tax within the proposed annexation, declaring results of the special election, determining validity of prior proceedings, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing recording of an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions on this item?
No.
We'll go to the public hearing, and we'll open the public hearing right now. If there are any questions or comments on this item? City Clerk, did you have the election results?
Yes, Mayor, I do. The ballot for the 88 eligible votes was received on February 25th, 2019, and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments regarding this item? Can we have a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2019, next in order, calling an election on levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number One, Annexation Number 178, declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recordation of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien in connection with approval of Preliminary Development Plan, PDP 17001.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ted. Here's the motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number eight, which is Resolution Number 2019, next in order, Adjusting Electric Generation Rate Schedule for Rancho Mirage Energy Authority, that's RMEA, Community Aggregation Program. And today, we have Tiana presenting this, and she's a senior management analyst. Welcome.
Thank you. Let me just pull up my presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item I will be discussing today is a resolution approving adjusted electric generation rate schedules for Rancho Mirage Energy Authority, RMEA. I'd like to start by first mentioning a few program highlights. RMEA began providing power to our community in May 2018. The projected community-wide savings after the first year of operations was estimated at $1.4 million. I'm happy to say, within six months of operation, the community-wide savings has already been $900,000. In addition to the 5% savings residents receive, RMEA makes it affordable to make an impact in addressing climate change. RMEA's premium renewable choice gives residents and businesses the option of opting up to 100% renewable energy at an affordable cost. Residents and businesses can opt up for a small incremental increase from the base choice rate of $0.04 per kilowatt-hour. The average residential account in Rancho Mirage uses 1,100 kilowatts per hour per month. Should this average residential account opt up to 100% renewable energy, it would be at the low cost of $4.40 per month. And for those who are unaware, all city facilities and operations requiring electricity are running on 100% renewable energy, thanks to the bold decision of the council to opt up all 160-plus city meters. Moving on to the item I will be discussing today, resolution approving adjusted electric generation rate schedules for RMEA. An essential part of RMEA's operations is rate setting. On the screen, you'll see a timeline of past, current, and upcoming rate-setting dates. In February 2018, the city council adopted its first electric generation rate schedule for all residential and commercial accounts. The rate schedule was subsequently amended in June 2018 to add an additional commercial rate. For ease in customer understanding and cost comparisons, RMEA's rates are developed to mirror those of Southern California Edison, SCE, while meeting the city council's goal to maximize cost savings to our community. Since the establishment of RMEA's inaugural rate schedule, the California Public Utility Commission has directed the Investor-Owned Utilities, SCE being one of them, to implement changes to their rates and implement default time-of-use rates. On a time-of-use rate, or TOU, a customer's bill is based off of when they use electricity and how much they use. The current TOU rates define the peak, or most expensive time of day, as midday, generally from 12 to 6 p.m. The new TOU rates being implemented define the peak, or most expensive time of day, to the evening, generally 4 to 9 p.m. This change is happening because the abundance of solar energy being produced during the day has resulted in the cost of power being cheaper during the day. The new rates better align prices with the cost of energy. The default TOU changes are being implemented in phases, with non-residential implementation effective March 1, 2019, and residential changes coming in late 2020. The rates as proposed will provide a savings to the customers of 5% compared to SCE's generation rates, and will generate sufficient revenues to cover all operating costs and fund reserves to provide financial and rate stability to the program. It is staff's recommendation that the city council adopt this resolution approving adjusted electric generation rate schedules for RMEA effective March 1, 2019. Before I conclude my presentation, aside from the TOU changes I've just discussed, SCE will be implementing its annual rate change effective April 1, 2019. Visibility into the actual rates is not made available to the public, including RMEA, until closer to the end of this month. Staff will evaluate the impact of the rate changes on RMEA customers, set a public hearing, and bring a recommended rate schedule amendment to city council for consideration in April. Based off of the information we have now, I can say that RMEA will be able to continue to provide a 5% savings to the customer. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Any comments from the council? Questions?
I have a comment. Today, I brought with me a copy of my Edison bill comprising three pages. Oops, I take that back. Four pages, both sides. I'm wondering if we couldn't enlist our city manager, who is our expert witness on this issue, but perhaps at the next meeting, we could get a copy of the Edison bill, and you could show us all how we determine and where on here is the charging that we have for our own company, our own energy authority, your RMEA. You could kind of explain this to people, because I've been looking at this for a long, long time, and I wouldn't want somebody to ask me to explain it. That's why I'm asking you to maybe set it up as part of the agenda for the next meeting and help our residents understand this a little better.
Yeah, absolutely, and we can definitely do that. It's actually one of the things that Tiana has been working on. So on our website now, there's Understanding Your Bill. We're taking that one step further, and we're going to do a little how-to video that'll be available online, and we'll also play it on RMTV. If a person wanted to go in and calculate their savings, how do you go about doing that? The challenge that we encounter, that every CCA encounters, is Southern California Edison is still the billing authority, so they use our lower rate schedules on their bill. The advantage to doing that is it's easier on the customer, but Edison does a good job of making sure to make it confusing for the end user. So we are currently working on that how-to video, so we will be happy to share that with the council.
Great, thank you very much, Isaiah.
You still may be confused after the how-to video.
I'm sure, but at least... I'm sure, but at least, at least we gave it an old college try.
Yeah, I will just share with the council, you know, this has been a really fun program to implement. Of course, over the three years that we've been spearheading this effort, there's been some challenges. They mainly stem from having to rely on Southern California Edison sometimes, but we get some really cool examples about what the program can do for our community. You know, I think any CCA program, I wish them luck. I think it is a powerful tool for local communities and local government. It is nonprofit, so there's no profit motivations. And we had a cool example recently where part of our program, we had a few unique elements in it that you don't usually see everywhere else, is if you're on the low-income discount, which is called the CARE program, we set up our program so those CARE customers, those low-income customers, actually were saving close to 25% under our program. And so, we had one of those customers just contact us through one of the many ways online of, hey, you know, his comment was, "I'm seeing some of the lowest bills I've seen in years. Is this because of the program?" So, we did a full analysis on his bills. He lives in a mobile home park, he's on a fixed income, social security-based, and so, from May through the December bill that we were looking at at the time, we had saved that customer about $190 within, you know, those few months. So, you know, for somebody on a fixed income, you know, that's $190 that can go elsewhere in their budget. So, for some people, the savings really do make a difference. We understand for, you know, maybe everybody, the amount they're saving won't make a difference in their budgets, but it's, the other advantage of the program is we're also using a greener energy product. So, from an end-user standpoint, you're going to save a little bit of money, and you're going to help the environment, because we're using a greener energy product. So, it's kind of a win-win, but we do get those kind of wins, I will call them every once in a while, that is a nice reminder of kind of some of the cool things about this program.
Thank you.
Very good. Isaiah, what I'm reading down here, it says, "Within the last six months of the RMEA operation, the community-wide savings has already been over $900,000." Is this correct?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Very good.
At the end of the year, it'll be significantly higher.
Well, I'm looking for that, too. Great job.
Which of the other cities in the valley have the same program we've got?
None.
None.
Several other cities have looked at this program, but have not been able to financially put it together, so we are the only city in the valley offering this program.
Didn't SEVAG try to do it or something?
Tried to do it, yeah.
Oh.
Yep.
Well, that's good. At least we succeeded. That's good. We lead the way, we light the way for the other cities to try to join us in getting lower energy costs for their residents.
Yeah, and I think that's been consistent with our message, is, you know, Rancho Mirage is a unique city. We pride ourselves on providing customer service and being held accountable to our residents, and being in a position to be responsive, to take care of the concerns that come forward. And so, a lot of times, you know, if we can do it better ourselves, you don't see us join other programs, because we want to be in the position to be accountable to our residents, because that's what we pride ourselves on, is the customer service and the quality of life that we provide to the community. Thank you.
Dana, you'd be interested to know this, that the inquiry that Isaiah referred to from one of our mobile home customers commented about it being the lowest bill he's received in many years. He asked a skeptic about that, who frankly poo-pooed our program, and said, "Well, it must have been because of the weather, that it was unusually seasonably warm, that you didn't need your AC," or something along those lines. The point being that it had everything to do with our program. It was the 5% that we represented, and so, we have delivered beautifully, and frankly, we are the envy of other cities who have been left at the starting gate. So, I think we can all be very proud of the results.
Well, Ted, I agree with you, and in fact, other cities in Southern California have come to us to find out how we've been so successful.
Yep.
Yeah, and we wouldn't be where we are without Tiana, so thank you, Tiana.
Yeah.
This is, this is open for a public hearing at this point, so is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and could I have a vote?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, please.
I'll go ahead and make it, and I want to also thank Tiana, because I know she has dealt with so many people from the public, and answered hundreds and hundreds of questions, and it's been an amazing experience for all of us to know that what we can do in a program like this is so rewarding. And thank you so much, you've been a wonderful person at the helm.
Thank you.
Along with every, all your support group. But with that, I will make the motion that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2019, next in order, adjusting electric generation rate schedule for Rancho Mirage Energy Authority Community Aggregation Program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
And we'll now move on to the action calendar, and item number nine, which is consideration of a $100,000 donation to the CV Housing First Program. And Tiana, where you're back in the guidance again.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The final item I will be discussing today is a funding request of $100,000 from SEVAG in partnership with the Desert Healthcare District for the existing CV Housing First Program. The city of Rancho Mirage has long supported homelessness service providers in the Coachella Valley. This is exemplified by Rancho Mirage being one of the only three cities to contribute the full 103,000 funding request each year that Roy's Desert Resource Homeless Shelter was in operation. Last year, after the closure of Roy's, the city split the annual funding of 103,000 between Coachella Valley Rescue Mission and Path of Life Ministries for the CV Housing First Program. This year, the city council has an opportunity to have a minimum contribution of $100,000, matched dollar-for-dollar by the Desert Healthcare District. Recently, the SEVAG Homeless Committee hosted Barbara Pope, a nationally-known expert in homelessness, to present a study she completed for Desert Healthcare District. Ms. Pope highlighted two immediate data-driven recommendations to accelerate significantly reducing homelessness in her study. The first recommendation is to establish a collective impact network to include additional stakeholders. The rationale behind this is while individual sectors are actively supporting the effort to reduce homelessness, there would be greater progress if we were all engaged in a comprehensive CV approach. The second recommendation is to scale up diversion assistance, which is a strategy that assists homeless people seeking emergency shelter by helping identify immediate alternative housing arrangements. The rationale behind this is this is the most effective and cost-efficient way to address homelessness. In partnership with SEVAG, Desert Healthcare District is requesting $100,000 from each of the nine Coachella Valley cities to move forward the implementation of these two recommendations, with CV Housing First serving as its foundation. Funding of 160,000 has been set aside in the city budget to aid in homelessness. 52,500 of that budget has been allocated to other service providers, like Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, leaving 107,500 unallocated. With there being no budget impact as a result of the proposed funding, staff recommends the city council fulfill the funding request of $100,000 in support of this regional effort to significantly reduce homelessness in the Coachella Valley. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Hagerman and I are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
No.
Go to the public. We have a request to speak on this item. Greg Rodriguez?
Rodriguez.
Rodriguez.
You know me.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. I'm not going to take a lot of time, and I just really came here on behalf of Supervisor Perez, the county, and the SEVAG Homeless Committee to actually thank you, because you have been there from the very beginning, and by accelerating this step, this next step this year. As staff mentioned, Barbara Pope gave an amazing presentation. You were the most represented council in the room when she did the presentation to the wider audience at Palm Desert City Hall a month or so ago, so we, again, we want to thank you for your engagement and attention, and realizing the recommendations that Barbara made on how we can actually move this ball even further forward. We're at a really exciting time in the valley here. We've seen the success of the CV Housing First program over this last almost 18 months now, and with these next recommendations and the movement forward, and the buy-in of even more cities this year, we're really confident that we're going to be able to tackle this problem. We're never going to eliminate homelessness in the valley or throughout the country, but we know that we can make an effective impact on it, and Rancho Mirage really, truly has been a leader, and we just want to thank you for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, great. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, we'll close the hearing and come back to the council for a motion, please.
I will make a motion that the city council fulfill 100,000 funding requests from the Coachella Valley Association of Governments in partnership with the Desert Healthcare District for the CV Housing First Program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Would you please vote?
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we'll now move on to...
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I say something?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Townsend for all of his work on the homelessness committee at SEVAG, and also Greg, thank you for being here today, and we all look forward to you enacting some change in your new role. So, Greg was appointed by the homelessness committee to be the person to really help this regional effort get off the ground and get started, so thank you, Greg.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move back to the action calendar, item number 10, which is an award of a contract for citywide rubberized crack sealing, project CP 19.345, to American Asphalt South, Inc., in the amount of 147,669.20. And Jesse, you're going to tell us all about the crack sealing? You're on.
We're not paying for crack, are we?
Jesse is the director of public work.
Is that a plumbing jut?
Are you saying he's cracked, or, no, there's cracks in the street, right? Go ahead.
You're on, Jess.
Mayor and city council, today we are considering a contract award to perform crack filling on our streets in preparation for a slurry coat. So, I am probably more excited about asphalt cracks than everyone else, so I'm going to just have a short presentation here on some of the highlights and the key components of the project.
We are all excited.
I'm sure you are.
You see the tremble? You just can't wait.
So, why does asphalt crack? There's numerous reasons why asphalt cracks, loads, contraction and expansion with the seasons, sub-base settlement, poor bonding, but the point is, is that when you put asphalt down, it's just a matter of time before it cracks, so it's a normal part of the process. And we only want to fill the cracks on the roads you want to keep. So, any road you want to keep, you're going to want to fill the cracks in it. Average asphalt pavement has a lifespan of 20 years, and the cracks will generally occur within the first five years of that asphalt being put down. If you don't fill the cracks, there's a higher potential for potholes. Rocks and things that are non-correscible can fill the cracks, and then when the asphalt expands with the season, it intensifies the issues with the cracks, decreases the smoothness of the roadway, and ultimately decreases the lifespan of the pavement. So, how we treat an asphalt crack is, one of the first things that we require at our city is a hot air and heat gun that goes through the crack, and it goes up to 300 degrees Fahrenheit, and it blows out all the debris, and it cleans out the crack for the fill material. The fill material that goes in is a flexible asphalt-based material, it's applied level with the roadway surface, and then we allow that material to cure for three to four months. So, this is different from how a lot of other cities do it. Our city will let that material sit and cure for a while, and I'll explain that in a little bit. The expected lifespan of filler material is between five and seven years, and that is in line with how long our reas slurry is expected to last. Most slurry coats last three to five years. Our city uses a reas slurry that lasts five to seven years. It matches the lifespan of the joint fill material. So, this is the process in action. You can see on the left, there's the actual applicator filling in the cracks. On the right is a picture of some cracks that have been filled on the right, and they've been slurried on the left side of that picture that's on the right. So, question that we're going to often get is why we close the roadway to perform this work during season. So, the asphalt reacts with the temperature that's outside. So, the heat expands the asphalt surface, and when the heat expands the asphalt, the width of the crack is reduced. So, the red arrow that's at the bottom represents the width of a crack that's in summertime, and as that asphalt expands, it closes the crack. Cool temperatures shrink the asphalt surface, and when the asphalt surface shrinks, the crack is enlarged. So, the blue arrow at the top represents the width of a crack that you would see in the wintertime, and then moderate temperatures allow for a medium crack width, which is ideal for crack filling. So, the yellow arrow in the middle is what you're going to see in spring and fall, and when you place it at a medium crack width, it allows the material to expand and contract with the expansion of the asphalt without breaking that bond. So, it's important that we fill during season. And then, we allow our crack material to sit on the roadway for at least four months before we go over it with a slurry top coat. What's on the screen, on the picture on the left, this is Monterey Avenue, this is where the crack fill material was allowed to sit for four months and covered with a slurry. It's difficult to see the cracks. On the right is a bordering city, same street, and what happened is they do a crack fill and slurry as part of the same project. So, that fill material was not able to sit and cure, and it almost looks like a slurry went down, and then a crack fill went down on top of it, but that's not the case. Both these applications had a crack fill put down first. So, those are, I mean, this is just some proof of why it's good to crack fill in the cooler months, which is during season, and let it sit for a while before you put slurry on. Now, in addition, our slurry is a reas slurry. On the left picture on the right, it's not a reas slurry, so the picture on the right, the road is one year fresher than the left. So, you can see a pretty remarkable difference, especially given that the road on the left is a year older. So, for this project, we have the city broken up into six blocks, and we do a slurry, and the slurry follows the crack fill, so we have the city broken into six blocks, so within six years, we can move throughout the city and do every street with a crack fill and a slurry. The highlighted areas are what we're going to be filling this year. So, there are some areas by the school, and some areas that are going to be around A&amp;A inspiration. The contractor at that time will be given specific instructions to obviously stay away from those areas, but we do our best to mitigate any type of road closures during this time. The crack filling is a very quick process. It's not like slurry that takes a full day to dry. In fact, anytime we do a crack fill in front of a residential driveway, we cover it with cold water immediately, so a car can get out of a driveway within five minutes of this application, and it's a rolling land closure, so the impact to the residents is very minimal for this process. So, that's it for the presentation. I want to thank Chet Khan, our associate engineer, who put the bulk of this project and the staff report together. The staff report, I'm going to go into detail on that. This crack filling project was posted for bids in January. The bid opening was performed February 26. Five bids were received. The lowest responsible and responsive bidder was American Asphalt South, Inc., for a total cost of $147,669.20 with no contingency approval. The amount is in line with our engineers' estimates. Staff did perform reference and license checks on American Asphalt. All is in good order. The funding for this project was budgeted in the Measure A Fund in the fiscal year 1819 approved budget. No budget adjustments are required, and staff is recommending a contract award to American Asphalt South, Inc., for $147,669.20 with no contingency. That concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes?
No questions, but I want to thank you so much for that wonderful presentation, all about asphalt, and we had the pleasure last weekend of going to the La Brea Tar Pits in Los Angeles. So, if you ever have a great burning desire to learn where asphalt comes from, how they get it out of the ground, and what's in it, La Brea Tar Pits is the place.
Okay. Can you work at the La Brea Tar Pits?
I've been there. It's very interesting.
It is.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
No.
Open to the audience? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the item and go to the council. Seeing none, we'll close the item and go to the council for a vote, please.
I will make a motion that the city council award the subject contract for rubberizing crack sealing, CP 19-345, to the lowest responsible and responsible bidder, American Asphalt South Incorporated, in the amount of $147,669. And I want to know where the 20 cents came in, but I will also include the 20 cents.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Would you please vote?
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Jesse. Great presentation.
Very nice.
Did you bring any crack with you today?
Say no to crack.
Careful there, young man.
Hey, hey.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number 11, which is the last one of the day, an agreement for document shredding and e-waste services with Desert Arc Mobile Secure Shredding in the amount of $1,440. This will be presented by Jason, our Senior Information Service Manager. Jason?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and staff. Item before you, city council to authorize staff to enter an agreement for document shredding and e-waste services with Desert Arc Mobile Shredding in an amount of $1,440 for the year. Desert Arc is a fully certified e-waste collector for the state of California. They have their license. Desert Arc will provide mobile onsite shredding on a four-week cycle for City Hall and Ranch Mirage Public Library Observatory. Each location will have three standard cabinets, and on the next slide I have right here actually shows a picture of the cabinets we'll install in our buildings. All Desert Arc employees are screened, trained to meet our compliance and our privacy standards. Desert Arc is located in the Coachella Valley. I'd like to show a quick video of Desert Arc. Josh, can you bring it up if you can?
We come to you and maintain a secure chain of custody so you can shred it and forget it. Desert Arc supplies the secure shredding while promoting their mission of creating employment opportunities for people with disabilities. Call today, 760-404-1370, and have confidence your materials will be destroyed in the most secure fashion available. Shred it and forget it with Desert Arc Recycling.
That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Jason. Are there any questions or comments?
I do.
You do. Charlie?
Isaiah, why don't you explain what Desert Arc is and what a great service they do and why we're doing this?
Yeah, so Desert Arc is a local nonprofit that finds employment opportunities for people with disabilities, so a way for them to support themselves. Recently, the city sponsored one of their events, and we had a mix of council members and city staff at this function, and it was really informative. They talked about the services that they can provide and what they can do for businesses and government within our own valley, and so it was just something that I didn't realize was available until we went to that event. And so we had quite a few staff members there, and so we all sat down as a team and said, "Hey, are there ways that we could utilize this service?" The great thing about the item before you today is, you know, the work is local, and we're actually saving a little bit of money going with Desert Arc. Staff is also currently researching some landscape projects that could be potentially transitioned, so there may be future actions that come forward to the council in a way where the city can support Desert Arc in their mission and also get the services that we need anyways, so it's a win-win.
Very good. I think this is a wonderful move that we are doing on behalf of Desert Arc, and I know that Isaiah was very instrumental in bringing this to the forefront, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Charlie.
And one additional comment, if you need to load up on Sees Candy, they sell it there.
Ted, did you have a comment?
I was going to make a motion when you're ready.
Would you make a motion? Oh, let's go to the audience, please, first, and see if there's anybody who would like a comment on this or question. Seeing no comments or questions, come back to the council for a vote. And can I have a motion, please?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that the city council authorize staff to enter into an agreement for document shredding and e-waste services with Desert Arc Mobile Secure Shredding in the amount of $1,440. And I will say that it, as Charlie mentioned and Isaiah, to ask and employ Desert Arc who use special need personnel is most satisfying, and I think does our city proud. So again, that concludes my motion.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
That's the end of the calendar for today, and we'll now turn it over to our city attorney, who will discuss the upcoming closed session. Steve Quintanilla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Jesse, if I run into a saber-toothed tiger along Gerald Ford, I'll know you got that crack seal in from the La Brea Tar Pits. I thought that'd crack you guys up. The council now is going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 to regard regarding one, potential initiation of litigation item, and the following two pending cases, Veronica Juarez versus City of Ranch Mirage, and New Circular Wireless DB AT&amp;T Mobility versus City of Ranch Mirage.
Thank you, Steve. We will now recess into closed session.